All right, we're live.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March second work session, a little school. Like we call a meeting in order.
Yes.
Yes. Recognition of, yes. Recognition of meeting. February night for a regular session from seven to seven twenty one. Then we will have a presentation, product promise. Andrew, you want to talk about that?
Um, so with with the COVID shutdown, um, last year we were unable to have our sports business out. Um, and this year, Mr. Shabbat, even with all the, certainly things going on, him in the conservation club, they really nice job of putting together a pretty, uh, pretty nice sports business night out here, bringing that back even after. So I believe they made close to six thousand dollars and had about three hundred and fifty people come through the door that night.
It's back.
So it's a very nice night.
It's probably a stupid question. Did they have any guns?
Yeah, yeah, so he's gonna have his officers.
He used to have them chained, oh, they wrapped, they had no guns here then. We used to have the guns there with.
Never.
Oh, well, they good. Good, because they took the bullet or whatever, they took the mechanisms out and chained us to the titty board. Yeah, the bolt, not the evil part. The. The part of them not to let you pull.
You know, that my son Jermaine signed, do you know I touch it on, because I said, that'll be the only time you see this sign posted in school anywhere.
Yeah.
That's the thing you wanna touch, whatever, if you're.
Item.
In some way.
Yes.
Item number three, reports from standing committees. Mr. Kirkwood, did you want to say something?
Yes, uh, are you, yeah, we have the IU uh, general operating budget that's in front of you, uh, we, uh, passed it last month at the IU, well, actually it was the month of January, we passed it. The IU came in about eighty eight thousand less than it did the previous year. And we will, yeah, I believe we're gonna be voting on it this month to approve. Uh, we approved it unanimously at the IU board meeting in January, and I am recommending that we do pass this um, by our board. And also as well, uh, there is the IU fourth convention is coming up in April. And, uh, I didn't know if I could ask this now or the regular meeting about asking if if our board could, if I would like to continue on with the IU board, if I could be nominated for that position to continue on.
Is that a yearly thing?
No, he took part of the term.
I I took part of the terms, so now it's.
It don't make a three year.
So we got that information from the interview, correct?
And we'll, we'll all, any more conference?
Yes, and there's also for to be nominations. If you, if you don't, I do have the email, but if we could have that on the board agenda next week.
Where's the conference?
It's at Grove City, it's the MIU four.
You drive all the way to Grove City to have Flora Brothers.
Oh, I thought we kind of stuck in turn.
No, it's Flora Brothers. Yeah, but it's, it's, uh, yeah, it'll be in, uh, the end of April. I've gone in the past, uh, they've had it for the past couple of years due to COVID, but if you can have, if you can go, it's a good thing to go to.
Just, just as the load tech, we got an architect for twelve in renovation we're doing. In fact, we're, we're hoping to have that in place for the.
We're hoping to have the second part of our welding program, fabrication shop open, and a second welding teacher. So right, right now, um, the career center, um, there's almost more students in the welding booth, so it's obviously a safety concern as well as an exciting concern that we are attracting more people to the boat.
Any additional standard committee reports? Okay, item number four, administration or administrative report. Mr. Sykes.
Um, last week I had a discussion with the drivers about when I'd be driving, what I've been talking about, maybe trying to see what I can do to combine some routes together, maybe try to make routes a little bit more efficient. I've driven a lot of my seats, they could maybe change, but we still got a lot of dirt to cover. I wanna make sure we can't knock it down in certain roads. But roads now, we may not have a kid, but if someone's gonna sit in and I gotta sperm and scramble to try to make it back to that road again, so. I'm still looking at them and see what I can.
Relative to that, can you discuss our idea of having a floater?
If I can cut a route, um, I wouldn't say you want a route, but we also use that driver to be a floater, and that would be all. That doesn't really matter.
I, uh, cutting routes scares the hell out of me, they, these routes are forty five minutes, and it's, I mean, I know logistics and we can't probably keep it either. Pick up a handle with it, but.
Yeah, I don't wanna make.
When Wilmington went to the service they have now, I think they cut two or three buses, ten kids on a bus over an hour. Especially with money.
No bueno.
Yeah, so with that in mind, Lance, guaranteed, he's not looking forty five minutes is our barometer to complete the route based upon a population, if we can, we might not be able to, but he's gonna explore. If we can have one less route, but create a permanent floater. And what we mean by that is, we're not, we're not looking to furlough anybody, we're not looking to decrease our labor force. But right now, how many days this year have you and or Dan been driving?
One of us, right?
And we, we had one situation where we were basing the two hour delay or a fit possibly on the fact that, well, we have a substitute driver right now who has a second job, but if we call the two hour delay, then we lose the substitute driver, and what do we, you know, now, Joe, three hours of persuasion to work that out. You know, it's a labor issue.
We've also been dealing with a lot of drivers off this year for certain things.
There are no substitutes.
Also, I've been, uh, making sure all our cameras work in our buses, we have a great camera system now on our buses, it's a say on camera, like, it's really pretty neat, I can clip a scene, email to the principal and stuff, it's really clear and it's a real mix. Making sure all the buses have them, I've been updating for the last eight or three years, and I think we all, I've had a couple buses a million, who's a monthly, but but those cameras, they're pretty. But just let's, yeah, they go out and feature them.
Just white strip lights, we have them on all the buses. Do they turn on and automatically?
There's a switch.
Okay.
It's not mandatory to have a strip light, that's their.
Right.
Some people apply them in the mornings, they can't see, you know, following bus or something, get your or a football game or something, you're on a road, you can't see where you're going, everybody's there, so they'll show them off.
I'm like, so I can see them in the morning. But I wasn't sure, I noticed some of them didn't have them on, so.
And also, I'm still training some people to try to get us the people here.
Mohawk reach out to you? I think, uh, our superintendent said, uh, something about, he had somebody. And he didn't have his driver's license. So I think they would do lots of transit people, no government's class.
Anything else? Anything else, sir? Any questions from the board?
Um, with Winston High School basement sorted out for the past month, we got it rebuilt, that's one of the means of getting stuff taken out of the basement, uh, the hatches and the backfire ducts. Unit and filters of the elementary have been completed earlier in the month. Our rooftop exhaust motors, we were going through, uh, warmer weather's coming, afraid to, uh, the turbine radio, and we got a lot of, uh, fans doing. Um, we've cut down also with the, uh, the valet, as we hear, we had a hard time getting stuff with, uh, unfortunately, the economy that, uh, Harold's over half year down, and I guess. It's just, uh, getting geared up right now for spring sports, trying to get ahead of the game. See what they're very express.
Winston motor. Yes. Anyone get a fix, or you tell me?
He did.
We gotta buy a new one.
No, we got that.
So video is, uh, pretty good company, uh, helps with that.
That's it. Any questions from the board?
This month I wanted to sort of go over an overview, we have some new board members, and I don't think that I ever spent any time to address um, the needs that, um, had definitely never been in the business when she came on board, which, um, could have been give her more degrees, she became full time in the district. Um, so I just wanted to briefly go over something, we can read verbatim, I tried to cover everything that we've covered so far this year in detail. But in summary, um, with COVID, um, and our concern of students' needs, their social emotional needs, on top of the regular day to day um, peer issues that a student might have, we tried to increase Miss Neaties' presence within the building, so every morning she's out reading students as they're coming in. She helps, she's storing student orientation, kindergarten orientation, she also is part of that, getting to know the students, getting to them coming in. We added a social emotional component on our referral packet, um, for student services, so a parent teacher can refer any student who they are concerned about socially, emotionally, to our team every month. We then provide intervention to them and meet every month to discuss that. Mrs. Neaties is also joining daily lunch groups. She does individual counseling daily as needed, she's done classroom lessons so far in third, fourth, fifth grade. That's usually based off teacher requests or whatever issues we're currently seeing, um, in the building. She also has taken over career lessons, and she's done and completed those for grades three, four, five, and six. She collaborates with Lawrence County DNA, drug and alcohol, to do classroom lessons, um, in all of the elementary K to six. She does daily parent contacts on a daily basis on any issues that arise, um, to work with those students and those parents to help there be a smooth transition on whether they're coming back to school, whether they're having attendance issues, or whether something's just bothering them. She collaborates with CYS. They were just there today, she was collaborating with what we could do to help assist any students or families in that. If we have any move ins or move outs, she contacts the other districts, um, to sort of make a smooth transition for students coming in and out of our district. If there's any students with medical needs, um, between her, I, Mr. Swirbly, um, or Mr. Friend Joel, we making sure that those medical needs are met within the building and they have the services that they they need. That's just a general, um, I'm not gonna continue to read verbatim, you guys can read everything, but if there's any other requests or duties that you feel need to be addressed or has been brought to your attention, please feel free to contact Mr. Rich, myself, and again, my biggest concern, especially with COVID, is that we are addressing all of those needs, and if there's something out there that, um, again, we could do better in addressing the kids' social emotional issues, I wanna make sure that we're doing that. Thank you.
Next up in speech and language, hiring process.
Um, Monday night, um, will be our final round, um, with you guys, remember, need to for you guys to make the decision on it.
It's a fairly dangerous process that you wanna through this one.
Yes, so, um, Mr. Swirbly, um, Mrs. Neaties, and I have reached out to a speech therapist, um, as a consultant to help in picking the questions, um, we had the first round, a list, a series of questions, and then I had a written portion um, that they had to complete for the first round. We got it down to four for the second round, for the second round, I had them do a speech lesson for me, and then I had them present an evaluation to me as if I was the parent.
Evaluation.
Evaluation report, um, as if a child received, had qualified for speech services, and I was the parent, how did they, they do, and presented that to me. So I am bringing to you of those four, the top two, that, uh, amongst all of us, we feel stand alone than, and then, and then the other ones. Six and six forty five. But they are.
In personnel committee, Mr. Redfoot, Mrs. Zensko, and Mr. Hammer Schmidt, I'm just getting a ten, but that's the.
Are we gonna get a last one of the, with the last four?
Uh, if you, I, I can hit whatever you want, I'm just giving it. And round two, I have four.
Well, we worked over a spreadsheet.
Spreadsheet of all applicants.
Trust has that, you can have that, and then. Right, oh, sorry, sorry. We get that spreadsheet of all applicants, and then, uh, and then we'll have, uh, information in the final stage of application. Let's keep that, let's get dressed.
I was.
Any, all questions?
Hey. Uh, so, uh, later night, athlete report three, we just pushed out Robert's report, so. Also, past month, we had our Valentine party, and with that, we were able to do our sixth grade Valentine dance, it should really went well, P T does a nice job, and it's kind of nice to go back to planning for those and the chaos it brings, we get spun, it's fun, so it's nice to have all those things back, back happening again. Um, so each year we send the kindergarten up for the animal experience up here, the same week the sportsman's night out for the light week. Uh, this year we sent first and kindergarten because first grader didn't get to go, so that will know that the experience went well. Um, also during the week, um, Mr. Harold sent his kids down, they did presentations in the social studies classes, um, which always goes really well, they do a nice job, and the kids like to hear from them, so that was, that was a nice week last week. Um, and then I'm currently working with the first grade team, we're pushing through to, uh, build our standard space report card, um, if you remember our plan. Uh, we fully implemented kindergarten this year, next year will be first grade. K to, K to two will be standard space. Um, wrestling, uh, we had two students, commonly great, we're Wipio champions this past two weeks ago, um, receiving medals at the Wipio, and then we have six wrestlers moving on to the PIA competition that starts this weekend. All powers are this weekend, and then people on the weekend would be state championship if they were.
We'll get that moved up to Saturday.
Saturday?
London boys, Wilmington, come on inside of it.
Okay. Um, at the high school quarter three, we're looking at, we're gonna do, we're doing walkthroughs quarter three on student engagement. So we have, we're using, um, Mr. Rich and I talked about a study that, um, we received an email about, so we took that form and adapted it, we'll get, um, student engagement in the high school for quarter three. Get everybody with the locker, myself and the code. And then the last thing, um, the Wipio asked for, um, nominations of students to sing the national anthem prior to the championship games. So we nominated Ava Conti, and Ava was selected to sing the national anthem, she'll be singing Friday, um, prior to the three A boys championship.
I did have one question, Dan. Um, Vision Ministries was in to talk to the teachers, so did we talk to them about anything with the students or with the?
Yeah, so we met, we talked to Mr. Come afterwards, um, the presentation that he showed to the, to the teachers was, was very powerful, and he's not sure if that's something that would be suitable for students at this point, so he said that he would like some, collaborate a little bit on how we could present that with students, so I told him whenever he's ready, um, we bring it together and try.
Cause he had mentioned something, and Mr. Rich had too, about an evening program for the parents, I don't think it's, I don't think you're gonna get anybody to show up to it.
Right.
Uh, I know it's pretty powerful, but I'm telling you, the trip to the funeral is pretty powerful, too, so I'd like to, I haven't talked to many parents, cause I ask parents, you know, would you be offended if your kids had, and I haven't really found anybody that was, you know, pushed back once, so, I mean, it's something that I do when it's, uh, I think Dan texted me the other day, and so far there's fifteen people just this year that have died from COVID. Fifty seven last year, so I mean, it's, and I, I, I just, I don't understand why there's not more conversation in the public about it. I mean, everybody knows somebody that's died from, or you've heard of somebody that's died from, I know three people, families that have had kids, and it just amazes me that you don't see more about it.
When you say powerful, what do you mean?
Um, so we, they went to Mohawk in the morning, um, I think they had six educators that got up and walked out because it was too emotional.
I like it.
Well, part of it is they have, uh.
They need to see, they need to see them frothing their mouth, like, this isn't all.
Well, the hard part of it is you have family members talking about the way they've bothered their kids, and that part, you know, but it does make kids sick, cause I don't think they realize it, you know.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you just go up there and say, hey, fentanyl's bad, this lace, it could kill you, oh, God, this is, okay, look, see that dead guy?
With the educators at Mohawk and, and just called these idiots and stuff, is, you don't know what stress that may have triggered in their lives, or what past experience that they have had in, in their life, so we did give our teachers kind of like a heads up the opportunity that, hey, it's common if you feel the need, the lead, no one, no one's gonna be.
Yeah, I, 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 I think we underestimate what these kids can handle, I mean, I, I'd rather err on the side of, oh my God, that really, yeah, that could be you.
Back in the seventies, when I was in school, LSD was a big thing, I mean, a huge thing, and there was programs, and they came to the school. And I can remember them movies and them people talking like it happened yesterday. And I think in doing that, families that had older brothers or sisters that got hooked on that shit realized, and they didn't do it, it, it broke, I think it broke the psyche, I really truly did, you probably, I don't know if they came to, it, it it was powerful stuff, I, I can still remember seeing that stuff.
And that stuff, you had multiple chances to kill yourself.
Yes.
With this stuff, you know.
Yeah, 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 it wasn't the, it was an over, I mean, yeah, yeah, but that was, poof. And I'm sure it strengthened, it kept kids from doing, I'm, I'm, I'm positive of that.
Even a driver said, I can remember the films, I don't know, my, they don't show this correctly, yeah.
Well, I remember sad, I mean, they came in and they showed us the helicopters with, with teenagers' blood coming out of them. I mean, yeah, it's powerful, it's sad, and it's gross, and it's terrible, but it's life, and it's real, and it can happen. So.
We do anything like that anymore, like, they used to burn the cars that were.
Yeah.
Wildcats.
It was, it was on an every two years, we did knocks, I don't know where we're at with that, but that week, we shot everything, not push out of the, so it's, um, yeah, we do, we do Redwood River Week, and we do the lock action every two years, and we do.
I'll, I'll talk to you, Mr. Paul and Dan, and see if they're, they're preparing or rolling out the kids and.
Okay, I know he's talked about wanting to find the program, so.
Yeah.
Because not all of it, I mean, the end of that program, kind of, when you have two old guys that are angry and they're yelling at you, kids don't, you know, they don't respond a lot of that, if they did, my grandkids would listen a lot better. You know, it's, I, and, cause I said something to Dan about, don't you have younger people that you could have talked to, and he was going to try and something like that. Okay, thanks. Uh, any additional questions from there?
Well, we had to utilize our flexible instructional day at the beginning of February, the third and fourth, um, district wide. Um, a lot of the administrators jumped on into some of the classrooms and were able to, to view what was happening in the classrooms. Um, tech had a lot of, uh, people calling for support. Um, we had very minimal issues, of, of maybe one or two families that just quit into access, so then they would contact me and I would talk to the families, and we would figure out how we would get the work in and kind of talk the parents off the ledge a little bit, that it was okay, things happened, and it, it wasn't the end of the world, and they'd survive it. Um, what, uh, Mr. Friend Joel and Mr. Swirbly put out, um, some surveys to the teachers and, and, um, families and stuff, got a lot of good feedback from it. Um, and in my opinion, they went, were both very successful days. Um, Dr. Data set up CPR training in eleventh and eighth grade and went into the classrooms, um, during February. As was mentioned earlier, FFA week, um, kicked off last week and ended with sportsmen's night out, which was, um, very interesting for me, that was my first one, so I was kind of excited to see it, and I have now learned how to add up the points for a deer.
There you go.
That's how we teach it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we were getting into the circumference and everything, so, yeah.
Also, you learned how to score.
Or score, see, yeah, see, already screwed up. I need to go again next year.
Okay, good. Hey, all the questions from the board? Mr. Lee?
Um, yeah.
Okay, I didn't forget this time.
All right, good deal. Um, just continue to, uh, provide support for PIMS, I will, I'm bringing money to the table. Um, and, uh, you know, we've been working through, I was telling Mr. Rich, Mrs. McBride has gotten much more proficient at the state reporting, but it's always complex, and there's, there's always errors that need to be resolved, and, uh, we ran into a couple of big ones last, last weekend and the last couple uploads, but she's doing a good job, and I've definitely still been providing support to her. Um, in addition, as Ms. Columbus said, we provided support during the FID days, I think it went very well with the lone couple of exceptions being uh, parents that may not have had internet at home, number one, or number two, um, you know, connecting their devices, excuse me, not using using BYOD devices as opposed to district devices. Um, continuing to work on budget preparation, beating up vendors the best I can, so when I do bring costs to you there, the, the best I can do. Still working on E-rate, uh, there's a lot of different paperwork, it's a logistical nightmare at times, but that has all been submitted, so we're, we are on pace for our deadlines, and, uh, the last little bit of statistics, a hundred fifty three tickets, um, K through twelve in February, our response time was, average response time was four hours and forty nine minutes, this is actually longer than last week, or last month. Um, but they were a little bit more complex errors, but our resolution time is faster, one day sixteen hours. Overall, uh, I think the FID, like I said, the FID days went well, I think overall we're in a pretty solid place compared to where you've been in the past.
Are you seeing, starting to see a decline in the total number of tickets?
Not really, no, and I mean, not everyone's not complex, some could be as simple as we set in the password, but we're pretty, we're pretty, we're pretty, uh, uh, standard on the number, it's pretty consistent.
Are you gonna put those into a, a process that enables you to look at it a little more detailed, such as quick fix versus software versus hardware versus?
We have all that, yeah, I have, we use a ticketing system that, that puts everything within the categories, I could produce a report if you'd like to see anything.
Yeah, I would.
Okay.
I'm, I'm curious as to how much, I don't wanna call it like user error, but let, let's say superintendent, he can call you work on the projector, and he calls you, and he realizes you didn't hit the power button.
That happens, yeah, it happens, we've, we've all been guilty of that, my son included, right?
Well, you gotta do, you gotta record those things, but yeah, you can break it out over like the last three, five months.
Absolutely, I'll have that for you for next week.
That'd be great. Any additional questions for Mr. Lee? Okay, Ms. Bodra?
Um, so, Rodman and Murgis, uh, that's been a big focus of mine, we um, we proved all of this, we go out last month, we were all, there's three, that's all for for most of the good things, the week before, of course, on this five items. These are pretty good recommendations, and, and shows up at the end of this week, um, I'll make everything that I need, and now start putting stuff into our computers and stuff, and. So that's been a big focus, I got my, most of the. So that's been a big sum of this, I've got, I have most of the table and French benefits up that. We have, uh, leading on the fifteenth of March with a consortium for healthcare. Um, it's not often this far, it increased this year in New York.
I watched State of Union last night, zero increase.
So is that ten percent more of the consortium?
Um, that is our increase and I think the average consortium was twelve. That was a preliminary number back in, um, November, so we'll see what the final one, which we have not had a part of this month, I don't think this year yet.
We more or we the consortium or?
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, we the consortium, that's more of a broken, broken out.
At least that were just that part of the consortium, that we allowed the shop up and up.
There is a process for leaving it, I mean, that would be the possibility.
The reason I mean is, cause we just went through this a couple of months ago with my company. We found that we got out of rates and actually policies that would increase up in.
At now or?
Um, no, blue classes, who's she ordered, Roger?
Um, I know Richie does shop it for us each year.
Yeah.
And I don't, we'll find out about that. When they found out from the other.
I would just ask them if they look out outside, outside, is there anything in a junk truck? States what we like to.
Yeah, we would not be able to change the benefits.
Right, we would change, but you could change.
Yeah, but we don't have consortium, it's a process.
Oh, absolutely.
Um, is it to our money? I mean, there's been, I mean, there are other consortiums to.
Yeah, I would just be interested if they're pulling data or getting bids outside customer base. Or if they're only using companies and.
Preliminary meeting board. Obviously, I think, uh, in addition to the, my importance, especially by check. Even that, that's a consortium of schools, mostly how you, you know, to lift it. It's also that, uh, you, you, which is, we only manage.
Everybody gets the same.
So those moves, all the, like, that. And recently, we've had a contract.
Um, I wanted to just bring your attention that we had an increase in our class of PNC, our sweep account, which is a money marketing account, which was getting maybe ten to twelve dollars in interest a month anyway. So we closed that, so we could take off that feature, um, in a while ago when interest rates, you know, interest rates were good. That was a viable reason to activate. So this week the money out of the, um, general fund that wasn't used, they didn't want to then bring it back whenever needed, it was not a matter of process. The danger is rate from that to a hundred dollars a month. So, um, I'm watching the, our, our banker and I said, I know that that's some good things that, especially based on what we're paying you from having those. So, so now, you know, we took care of that. Um, got finished up the two thousand nineteen tax collector audit this week. Um, we are gonna do twenty and twenty-one, complete a change in my salary and slavery account. Um, they're gonna continue with, um, doing those two as well. I did add a late addition to the agenda for a nurse conference that I got some information on today. And I, even since I printed it, they're, they're gonna need subs, so when you see your entry on the agenda, and I have two days of subs as well, it is a virtual conference, but I think it's a public. We did get a fifteen hundred dollar grant for our big service department and Carrie got it refunded for, in the budget, it's your, for you, for another display in the cafeteria here. And, uh, rather than the little brown, um, felt thing, you put the letters on that had fallen down and broken into pieces. She wanted another digital one and that grant's been allowed. It's all funded, it's a lot of different hundred dollars, but that's only about a four hundred dollars a cent, so.
Nothing.
Okay, uh, so next week we'll move to treasurer's report. So we'll be approving the treasurer's report for a general fund. Balances of January, one million three hundred twenty-six thousand nine hundred eighteen dollars and seventeen cents. Receipts of two hundred forty thousand four hundred and eight dollars in hookset. With expenditures in February of eight hundred fifteen thousand ninety-seven dollars and twenty-three cents. For balances of February twen- twenty-eight of seven hundred eighty-eight thousand two hundred twenty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. Um, you'll also have the investment report, we'll be approving. The approval of bill listings. That will be the recommendation of super technical board for a general fund bill listing in the amount of seventy-five thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. And checks and payments written manually in the month of February in the amount of six hundred and sixteen thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars and eighty cents. For a total of six, uh, six hundred and ninety-two thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-two cents. We'll also be approving the food services fund bills for thirty thousand and eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. And then move to action item number nine, board action items of personnel, leave of absence. We're laying out oats beginning on February fourteenth. Through approximately May sixth of twenty twenty-two. Any questions about that? Uh, student employees. Lauren Harrell and Marcus Chavez, a student employees at the bus garage for one period during the day for the remainder of the school year. Twenty dollars or, uh, twenty hours per week during the summer when needed at a rate of ten dollars per hour, effective immediately. Mr. Sager, any? Just need extra help, extra hands washing buses, washing buses?
I'll always have somebody going today, like a couple of hours a day, wash buses. That's a great help, when it comes to washing, you can, when is the week, can you, we have, you just can't get it all washed, that's nice, and I kick them down, we give them three, three buses, he gets at least three a day done in the summertime. We can always use cleaner buses.
Okay. I didn't know if that was just for playing them or these were kids that said, hey, I'd like to learn the mechanics, I would change it or whatever.
They have not came to me, but we've had some kids that wanted to do stuff like that, and I brought this, this guy's.
Any questions from the board? Okay, item number C, cactaria stock cashier position. It will be opening up a physician, approve the employment, excuse me. Sylvia, I'm not even gonna take a shot at that.
Sylvia B.
Sylvia B, at the rate of eleven dollars an hour. Effective March tenth, for twenty-six point five hours per week.
Aditya, Aditya?
I'm not gonna test it either.
We'll just go with that, Aditya.
Yeah. Sylvia B, item D, speech therapist. Sorry, imagine what fell from the personnel to me. Item E, professional development workshops. So we got, uh, safety care training. And Power Liberty Springs train in Cranberry, what's that?
Power Library is a, uh, universal access system. Our library is part of Power Library, we have access to other libraries, whatnot.
That's okay, that's the automated version of the duty desk. Uh, then action item number three for Ms. Data and Ms. Nagle to attend virtual meeting, like Jen said, there will be substitutes put in here for next week. Uh, bus driver, so approve the employment. Uh, Gregory J is a bus driver pending in, pending receipt of required documentation.
Just go, go.
Yeah, might as well, I was gonna go with, uh, just.
We'll get a shot, we'll get a shot.
Uh.
We're not exactly, I think it's a little off.
Yeah, so, um, what's the rate?
It's pretty contracted rate.
Okay, before you just put that in there.
Yeah, we're not trying to. Yep.
Item G, additions to the volunteer non-instructural substitute listing. I don't envision folks of that. Oh, okay. Uh, retirement reservations. Uh, however, Jeannie, what?
Go ahead.
Uh, we can remove Jean Michaels.
That was recognized, I, I see you in October and I, um, it came up again in conversation and I wasn't sure that I had it on there and then I forgot to take it off. So it was very boundless, so you can take it off.
So that will be removed for next week.
Mm-hmm.
How about, or just keep for the volunteer list? For the chair leaders.
Chair. Oh, no. Resignation.
Yeah, resignation, the last one, she wants to be on the volunteer list.
You want to amend that motion?
Um, at this point, I think. Personnel, technically, we need to be in an executive session, have a discussion.
Yeah, you can, yeah, as far as that.
Before saying, hey, I don't say, we would need to be in an executive session.
If you approve that next week, then she's on the volunteer list, correct?
That's a question you can ask, I mean, you're accurate. If, if that's the way the motion is written. You couldn't just say, you know, you're not, this is not discussing whether she is or whether she isn't. What I'm discussing at this time is the way you write the motion. You can write the motion.
I would say they need to be two separate.
There you go.
And that's, that's.
Yeah, that makes it clearer, yes.
And to be honest with you, we can't have, the way that the agenda is written, we can't, doesn't matter if it's, this one, it doesn't matter who it is, this is for retirements and resignations, this has nothing to do with the volunteer.
That makes sense.
So it means it'd be clean.
So do we have a line item for volunteers?
Yep.
Above it, so I'll, 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 line item or one separate all, leave it all together?
Uh, it would be. Volunteer to volunteer, yeah, it'd be separated.
I would do the, the volunteer. Oh, I'm sorry, no, separated?
It's, it's gotta be separated, right, so retirement reservations?
No, no, she means along with all the rest of the volunteer.
Yeah, if we were, if there, there was gonna be a place for that to be added, that's what.
Yeah.
Okay.
For the remainder of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, which you'll, you do all the tiers, or the following year.
Right, that's sort of that's what they do, the volunteers.
You're gonna put it under that, there's no list of volunteers, is there?
Yeah.
It, it, it is, Jen will just have to add it to the pile.
We'll, 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 on the list.
It's G.
It's G.
He may bear.
Big list of funds.
Yeah, but there's nobody on mine.
Well.
Seriously?
Yeah.
And the doc.
Well, you gotta love the new IU canvas.
I hate it. Like, not in front of me. We hate, I think.
I know, so it's, it's horrible, it's horrible. Unfortunately, this is the document we must work for.
We can't add, we can't add the volunteers on this piece of paper.
You serious?
We could.
You can't.
We think so. Okay, from there we'll move that, item number ten, board act- board action items, maybe the whole, uh, internship. We have field trip activities. So it looks like they have two different field trips. National College Fair and Miss Miles and Miss Swirly's. Uh, eight students to go FPLA. And Hushy. Is that the normal cost and with that, something to remember?
So every year, students in FPLA would read at the regional level. If they finish first or second in their regional competition, maybe one of their Hushy and state level. The cost is based upon how many kids every year, at least, the show actually sent a few less.
It's quite a few less than what we used to sell.
Right.
Well, it was also, again, this was, this was also a year where the regional competition wasn't in person, it was all virtual. So students had to submit their stuff virtually, thank you. It doesn't always lend itself to some of those like, like large enough clinically, it's very hard to do without the other groups around you to compete. And then others can judge them if they're, well, just looking at their videos, just compare to what happened, kids are finding them sensitive. It's a different flavor.
It's, it's, it's pretty expensive, but.
Yeah.
Um, then we have, uh, subject C. Western intermediate. Four for the operating budget. For the operating budget amount, the goal will be three thousand three hundred fifty-four dollars. Excuse me, three million dollar budget.
All right, it's twelve.
Whoa, it's twelve, it's about twelve. No. Can we put that in here, though?
Yeah.
What balls? Participation.
Yeah, yeah, that's what.
And then just, you know. We've got no, no questions under chair. If we have any other items they want to bring to the board for the next week.
I have one more thing I think that was bringing your comments, we have, uh, two, two block year leases and I'm comparing the end of its lease period. Um, so we're, Frog, Billy and I are looking at stoppings for what we're gonna do with those leases forward, whether we can roll them all into one or send them or somehow commit sales with it. Um, we have those two, they're up for lease, we have two, we already own one of them, it's our future on, if it's not working out, like I was watching the report. It's still fortunate, but, um, we're gonna kind of live the life of that.
You, this is a good time to do an inventory, if you need all the printers you have in the buildings or if you can cut one or two up, would be great.
Yeah, we, we already did that walkthrough, we'll most certainly make that analyzation and, and we will cut everything possible that is not required.
Someone has to walk twenty-five feet to get a copy of that.
We already, we only have the large coffers now, we have good one.
Okay, because, so what do you have, you have this big one, I'm here.
We have one in here, we have one in.
Same as this basic one?
We have, so we have a larger one in the, in the high school office. We have this one in the district, there's, there's one in the guidance office, there's one in the library, there's one upstairs. Uh, we, it used to be the old, teachers, and then we have the partner that's breaking.
There's a handful standing, but not many.
Any additional questions or items? Thank you.